We'll order the committee of the whole meeting of Monday, June 4th, 2018. The court call will be...
Mayor Vermaat?
Here.
Mr. Cabino?
Here.
Mr. Lowry?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Martinez?
Here.
Mr. Giebig?
Here.
We have one item for discussion this evening. The way that we're going to work this is we'll have D.R. Horton make their presentation. I think staff will make the presentation. We'll explain everything that's happened up to that point in time. And then the board can discuss. I guess before the board discusses, we'll have audience comments. So that's the way we'll roll. So our discussion item, Mr. Tuch.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and introduce D.R. Horton. Let him come up and give the presentation tonight. And I'll follow with the Greek talk on the presentation as well.
Good afternoon. Just speak into the mic.
Good evening. Is this close enough? Good. My name is Mark Fields. I'm with D.R. Horton. I have had the privilege of being in front of you a couple of times in this type of setting. And I look forward to you being back again tonight to kind of walk through some of the revisions, some of the enhancements and revised proposal that is in front of you this evening. Would like to just quickly introduce, I am joined tonight by our consultant team. Many of you will have familiar faces. Mr. Jerry Shane with Shane Banks has joined us tonight, as well as W.B.K., our land planning Simcon, working on our site engineering. Gary Weber Associates as our landscape package act, as well as a joint buyer of traffic consultants this evening. Just a brief kind of history. It's hard to believe that we're approximately a year from our first time kind of doing the pre-application meeting and kind of kicking off the process to where we are today. There has been some significant change, involvement in, I think, what we originally came in front of the village you proposed. And we're excited again to be back in front of you this evening to answer questions, to kind of show you how some of the things have evolved in the process, in the detail, and getting to kind of a closer to-finished product and proposal. Just some brief introductory, we all know where the site is located, off of Route 25, just east of the Fox River. And what we have proposed is an active adult community, a community that is providing what we would call an active lifestyle to a buyer who chooses to live in an environment with a large community-centered place of destination. Just some highlights, and I know I've said this before, but what is an active buyer? What does that mean when an independent buyer chooses a lifestyle? And what they're looking for is proximity to shopping, proximity to natural cultural attractions within the area, quality medical facilities, and largely low-maintenance living, you know, kind of the privacy of homeownership combined without necessarily the obligations for, you know, day-to-day maintenance, seasonal maintenance. Some of the main items that you've seen or have progressed within our application have been some of the onsite activities, the open space, the enlargement of that percentage of open space, the conclusion of a clubhouse, lakes, walking paths, and a combination of active and passive parks. And together, you know, these types of amenities combined with a product really drive this low-maintenance-age, you know, active adult type of community where residents can, new residents can come into town, but really predominantly trying to keep existing residents, providing them with opportunities within the Village of North Aurora to be able to stay, stay local, live local, continue to be around family, involvement in their churches and their community organizations. And we pull it all together, the lifestyle, the product, the amenities, to really develop, like I said, a sense of destination point, a true community that's, you know, different than a lot of what we see in traditional housing, traditional neighborhoods. I do want to take a minute, and I'm going to hand over kind of the centerpiece of the presentation to Adam Rack. Adam is with W.B.K., our land planner. He's going to walk through, again, some refreshers on where we've been in the past, as well as highlight some of the changes that have occurred since our last plan commission hearing. And again, kind of the involvement of the plan, working with staff, working with the village to get to a point where we are back in front of you this evening.
I'm going to stand at this podium so that I can see this right here. As Mark says, my name is Adam Rack, W.B.K. engineer for the Land Planning Consultants for the property. We are proposing as part of our package tonight the zoning map amendment. As you can see, on the left is the village's current zoning orbit, which identifies the property as R1. On the right is our proposed configuration, which is a mixture of R1A, R3, and R4. As you can see, to the east, we are compatible with the existing R1. There's a strip of R3 to the south, which aligns with what we are proposing as well in the southeast corner. And in addition, we are proposing the R4 southwest corner along Route 25. So all in all, we're proposing very compatible land uses with the existing zoning specifications. As most people will remember, we've been forth with many different site plan iterations. We won't spend too much time talking about those. So one that you will remember and actually that we're reacting to today was a very straight, grid-like configuration. We got great feedback, working with you all, as well as planning commission, working with staff, to come up with a site plan that we'd actually grown quite fond of and we're very excited about and looking forward to that meeting today. Next slide. Next, please. It's going to take a minute because there's a lot going on. As you can see, the site plan design is really driven by the land itself. Water and drainage is a key component of this site plan. There's a significant drainage way indicated by the blue arrows, obviously entering the site at Banbury, spreading down towards Route 25, obviously draining and outletting towards the river. We let that kind of be the driving force behind our site plan that locates our stormwater detention areas primarily located along Route 25. And then in addition, we wanted to make sure those were kind of showcased as real amenities for the property. So we kind of encased those and defined our neighborhoods using those greenways and kind of making those the central features of the property. Next slide, please. We then introduced a street network. As you can see, we are now proposing a very curvilinear street network, much more on the level that is more common in the village. We have aligned to the northeast, we have aligned the proposed entrance with Oak Press Drive, and we're proposing a single curb cut along Route 25, essentially located along the Route 25 frontage. And then we have one to the southeast, a proposed curb cut along Banbury. The north part of the site, proposed zoning of R1A is our single-family portion of the site. We have 149 units in this location. We are also, obviously, there's our rain road around the perimeter of the project, and then we are also proposing an interconnected grid of curvilinear streets. Next slide. To the southeast quadrant, or the southeast quadrant of the property is our people's lot. We're proposing 126 units, 85-foot lot width by 120 feet deep. Next slide. And then the R4 portion of the property along Route 25 is our townhome section. What's unique about the townhome section is the configuration around the centrally-accessed parking port, which creates an alternating condition of parking court and courtyard on the opposite side. So some of the units in there are really fronting these kind of attractive and intimate courtyard areas, attractive landscape that we can show in the landscape plans later on. What this does, this configuration organizes these plans around these parking ports. It prevents us from having long and monotonous basins, front-facing garages along the streets. So it puts the side in the short end of the building along the street and, again, providing some more variety along the street. Next slide. Originally, we proposed a single-loaded sidewalk condition based on some of the comments we received from you all and from staff. We were encouraged to incorporate sidewalks on both sides of the street, and we have shown that here. We then supplemented the sidewalk connectivity throughout the neighborhoods with a series of naturalized trails and paths, and we'll be traveling throughout kind of our landscape nature areas and really become an amenity for the property. Next slide. This is the final view of the site, actually starts to fill in some of the landscaping. We do have a landscape plan, which we'll talk about shortly. But what we have here is really a series of three distinct neighborhoods, the R1A single-family, the R3 duplex, and R4 townhome, that are kind of defined by these natural areas where we really feel is a strong amenity for this property. Next slide. The landscape plan is shown here. We are proposing approximately an additional 1,200 trees in addition to the trees that are going to, or that we hope to save in the project. Based on some of the comments we received from planning commission, we did add some additional evergreen trees, which was the preference of planning commission, along the northeast and south buffers. Next slide, we'll talk, yeah, the buffer areas. The buffer areas are unique to this project in that we kind of took a strategy to plant those based on the existing condition of the buffers. As you can see, the unique buffer along Route 25 is defined by the attractive detention basins. That is a required buffer of 50 feet to Route 25. So we also maintain as many trees as we could in that area based on grading. We will maintain as many based on grading requirement, and then begin to supplement some of those plantings along Route 25. The 40-foot buffer along Banbury is existing plantings. To be honest, the plantings there are, some are in good shape, some are not. There is some plantings in the right of way as well. The plantings that are saved will be continued to be maintained by the village, and then we will then supplement some of those plantings to provide a stronger buffer along Banbury on the common areas behind the lots. Back, I'm sorry. Not that yet. The orange indicates the buffer along the north. We are proposing a 30-foot buffer, which again is not required by the ordinance, but that is 30 feet from our property line to the rear lot lines of those buildings there. There's an additional 30 feet rear yard setback, so in essence a 60-foot total buffer from, to the north between the rear of our buildings and our lot lines. And same goes for the south. There's a 24-foot buffer, additional, I believe, 25 rear yards in those areas for those townhomes. Next slide. This is...
Can you specify which page area you're in?
That is on, that's in the presentation. So...
Okay, so is that...
The buffer should be in that exhibit.
Okay.
This exhibit, and we do have cross-sections for all the buffers. This one, for brevity's sake, we decided just to show it to the north. As you can see, a single-family lot number 28, which is shown generally in the area of the section line, A.A. We have a proposed 30-foot minimum rear yard from the rear of the lot to the rear property line. We have an additional 30-foot landscape buffer in that area, so essentially 60 feet from the rear of the home to the perimeter property line. We're then showing plus or minus 55 feet, which is actually the minimum distance between adjacent residents' rear lot line to the existing homes. So we have essentially a minimum of 115 feet of buffer between the homes on our property to the north. Now I'm going to bring Mark Fields back up, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about the community clubhouse amenities and the presentation right in the...
So as this plan proposal has evolved, one of the items that we are now able, I think, to provide a little more clarity and more detail on is the actual community clubhouse and amenity area. Weeks past, those have all been kind of developed, and although we knew that the importance of creating, right, this focal point within the community, getting to the point of working drawings and some concepts and some layouts, again, has been part of the evolution of the project over the last few weeks. And so I wanted to touch just briefly on this portion specifically. We've highlighted in kind of the reddish-orange color what I will refer to as kind of the out parcel or the clubhouse community parcel. On the next slide, it'll give you a little greater detail of just the layout of that space and what does that include. Obviously, guest parking, a proposed pool, the clubhouse itself, some outdoor space that you see with the pergola, the pickleball, the bocce, as well as making sure that we're being sensitive to proposed future residents that would be adjacent to the clubhouse in sight. So providing, you know, additional screening, additional plantings, again, to create not only that focal destination as you come up the main entrance, and you've kind of got the gray change from the river up to this higher point where this clubhouse will kind of be sitting up on the hill. So again, providing what I would call, right, some of the underlying, really drivers to what this buyer is looking for in this sense of community sense, is really having a usable space that has amenities and activities that they can really, you know, take part of as a part of their HOA news and just, again, as a part of the general community. The next slide, please. Again, we're proposing our concept elevation, again, kind of keeping the theme with some of the area, some traditional architecture, blend of different roof pitches, different siding, some stones, some vinyl, some nice roof details, again, as far as enhanced landscaping to, again, really be a true highlight as you come home, as a resident comes into this community, to really define that open space and, again, that kind of part of the hilltop that will shine per se to drivers coming up and down Route 25, but obviously to draw to come into a neighborhood, an age-targeted community, that really provides a substantial space for their activities. The next slide is more of a general floor plan, but again, just to highlight a few of the uses that this type of amenity clubhouse would have, some office space, what we would call some flex spaces. Some of those are community groups, some of those are used for HOAs, some of those are used for private parties, for events, as well as storage for things like mechanicals, pool storage, outdoor furniture storage, combination of both men's and women's restrooms, along with a movement studio and kind of a fitness area. So again, a nice combination. The amenity would also have what I would call a warming kitchen, so it's not a full-function commercial kitchen, but it does provide the ability, you know, for people to host gatherings, bring in food, keeping it warm, warmers, similarities to what you might see in a church-type of building, where it's not a full commercial kitchen, but it does provide the opportunity to host events that would require or where residents could use that. Next slide, please. Oh, I, one other mention. We're proposing, it's about roughly 6,000 square foot clubhouse. That, you know, that may go up a little bit, again, as they kind of define some of the required storage areas and really dive into a few specifics just related to spray floor rooms. I can see that overall square footage growing a little bit. Right now, the proposal is roughly 6,000 square feet. I also just want to briefly highlight again, you know, the product discussion this week we've talked has been relatively the same as it's progressed. The ranch home product we're proposing, again, what we would call our Freedom Series Home, ranging from 1,600 square foot to almost 2,200 square foot. All of these will be a two-bedroom, two-bath standard, some of them with options that have the ability to grow to three bedrooms. Similarly, they all have some sort of patio space, and those are standard 2D product. So some of those are covered spaces. In fact, the majority of them are a covered patio. And then there are a handful of plans that do have an exposed patio option. The next slide will show the proposed duplex homes. Again, similarly, square footages ranging from 1,400 to over 1,500 square feet. These products are a two-bedroom, two-bath, and again, all have, both products do have a covered patio as a standard. The third proposed home is what we refer to either as a triplex villa or a townhome, again, ranging from 1,200 square foot to just over 1,400. Again, two-bedroom, two-bath options. One plan does have a three-bedroom option. All of these would have an exposed patio. And so some of the interesting parts of this product and how it works together, it allows us to survey buyer profile ranging from, you know, 1,200 square feet on the low end to, you know, over 2,200, 2,300 square feet as you move into the detached single-family portion. The other part of the product that I always like to highlight is some of the variation of the rear exteriors, your exposed patios and covered patios. As we looked at the site plan and as it's kind of evolved, showing that open space, and the majority of the lots, whether single-family, whether attached, do back up to a green cord or some type of open space. So not only are we giving some interest in the street design side of the architecture, but on the rears of the homes with the landscaping, the hardscaping, as well as the mixture of covered patios, exposed patios, it really does create for a nice, diverse feeling when you're driving through a neighborhood that you've got both front and rear interest in some of those details. The next slide, please. You can go back one. So this is kind of our end slide, so to speak. We do have some supplemental in the, there are questions that are asked so that we can further, I think, you know, get into answers and do that. I do just want to mention, like I said earlier, it's been, you know, just shy of a year as we've gotten to this point in the process, and working with staff, taking direction, feedback that we receive from this body as well as the planning commission, really hope that what you have seen is our efforts into trying to get to a point of taking all of the feedback and trying to mold it and put it into a revised package that hopefully gets you excited for the possibility of this neighborhood in the village. I think it's worth highlighting, and I know that Mike will touch on this, as we did work through the process and we've kind of gotten to this step, I feel excited that we've really been able to address, if not 100%, all of the comments that have been received, as well as hopefully maybe provided some sort of compromised situations when we couldn't fully agree or have some challenges getting there. But I do hope that you've seen, you know, obviously the progression from a site plan, the loss of density from where we started at, over 400 units to where we are today, really a commitment to grow open space, provide for a high quality amenity, and really striving to generate or build excitement for Lincoln Valley on the Fox, you know, a true destination, an age-targeted community to help, again, establish residence local, but really also provide opportunities to bring new residents into the village. So I appreciate your time. I look forward to your questions. I believe Mike is going to go through his presentation to this point. Thank you.
Are you making me move out there later? I do have a question. How many residents are you looking at? I mean, is the approximate number that...
362.
362.
As of right now, it's proposing 374 units total.
So that will transfer and...
I'm actually going to add, actually, I'm actually going to tap on that. I have a question. And it was for the lengthy package that was provided to everyone, but in the package you should have the planning commission meetings from March 6th, the presentation, which I'm going to go over tonight, the response to standards for planning development, special use of map amendments provided by the petitioner, some other items. One is there, one of which is the draft of the ordinance. As again, tonight is just a committee whole discussion, there was no action taken, but the PUD ordinance that you see in front of you is a result of weeks of discussion between the petitioner and staff. So we've kind of arrived at a point where both parties are comfortable, but I'll get at that a little bit specific in my petition here. All right, a little bit about why we're here tonight. The property itself, which everyone knows the locations, the area, it's like golf course, is jurisdictional of North Aurora. It's within our county, our planning boundaries, but it is actually owned by the city of Aurora. So as of right now, thus, the petitioner of the developer is under contract with the city to closing the property pending the outcome of the zoning discussion. And again, they are petitioning a map amendment, which is rezoning the property which is curvilinear R1 to the R1A to accommodate the single-family homes, R3 to accommodate the duplexes, and R4 for the townhomes. They're also requesting the special use for the new development. It's actually required by code as it is two acres plus in size, and various departures within the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance, which is made part of the U.D. may include it in the U.D. ordinance. Total history, this started last year at the committee level with the Development Committee on September 20th. The plan that was presented, that included a total of 400 units. The Development Committee at that time was okay with the concept itself, but felt that 400 units was too dense, so we may go back to the drawing board previous to going for the committee of the whole on November 6th, 2017. I just want to make note, too, that starting with the second draft, the first draft was actually presented to staff. Staff took a look at it. It was a very grid-patterned layout design subdivision. We had actually highly recommended that they go back to the drawing board, which they had done, and before going to the Development Committee, and that was the result of the second draft plan. So moving forward, committee of the whole was the third draft plan, and that plan kind of highlighted the next major step in the direction of the plan itself, included the amenities, the walking trail, sidewalks on both sides, more of a linear, curved or linear subdivision pattern design, which Adam had presented earlier. The actual concept plan was well-received by the village board. That plan included 362 units. Now, the plan we're pushing tonight includes 374. The additional 12 units were duplex units located in the southeast quadrant there. And doing the calculations in open space, it equated to about a total of 7,000 square feet of impervious surface, so very, very minor comparison to what was discussed previous to that. Now, on March 6th of this year, the plan went before the planning commission, which was the fourth draft plan. Now, that plan included 374 units. That meeting itself was very heavily attended by the public. There were a lot of concerns that were addressed at that meeting. It was, we had quite substantial out there turnout for that crowd. The meeting itself went about four hours, so a lot of good feedback from that meeting. Again, the planning commission meetings minutes are included in your package for tonight for review, and those were all by the planning commission. And the planning commission did recommend approval of the petition. When I say petition, I mean the special use for the planning development, the map amendment, and the preliminary subdivision plan, basically under eight conditions. And it is worth noting, too, that staff actually did recommend approval of the petition itself prior to the planning commission hearing. Just to general outline of some of the topics that were discussed, traffic impacts, a lot of discussion on Banbury Road speeding, additional traffic on the road itself. There were a lot of concerns about Banbury Road heading north of Route 25 intersection there. Age-targeted versus age-restricted development. Again, this is not an age-restricted development, meaning there are undercovenants that require 55 and older, being age-targeted, which is, which Mark had explained earlier, is more by design, community-driven amenities, first-world masters, more connected community adjacent to shopping and healthcare. But a lot of what came of that discussion, when I mentioned that, is there were concerns from area residents regarding the density of it, being that if it wasn't age-restricted that, you can move in at that point. Stormwater impacts, that was discussed as well. The impacts of the stormwater, not on the level itself, but as it pertains to development to the north and to the south, as Adam's illustration depicted earlier, the actual water does flow east to west towards the river. And there were actually some concerns discussed, too, about how this would impact the park across the street and how that water were to flow across 25. Density was discussed, the number of units and their configuration, the thickness of the development in terms of subdivision layout. Building the side appearance and maintenance. Building the side appearance and maintenance, basically looking at the materials of the buildings themselves, being of lesser quality. But one of the other concerns was maintenance of the actual buildings themselves, making sure that if this was to be built, that would be oversight through maintenance arrangements. Buffering green space, obviously this is a very major concern considering 100 acres of open space right now, and then how the development itself would impact surrounding neighborhoods to the south, to the north, and to the east and so forth. So maybe a major part of the discussion. Tree preservation, the property is littered with mature trees, and I believe that the interest of the development is to preserve the majority of these trees, but that was mentioned at the public hearing. And it's been mentioned from the inception of the plan itself that it is a real asset and a value to the community and to the area to preserve as many trees as possible, and some concerns about wildlife displacement, should the property develop. At the meeting, there were discussions about traffic impacts, and one of the items that was discussed was the traffic study itself. So what happened was, one of the conditions of approval, that official traffic study. So staff actually reached out to Kailway Inc. to have this additional traffic counts conducted, but also to look at the methodology and the traffic report from the first group. So with that, I'm going to introduce Javier Malan, Kailway. Just kind of summarize the results of the traffic study that was done after the Plan Commission public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Javier Malan. I'm a senior consultant of Kailway Incorporated. Graduated in 1995 from Arcton University with a Bachelor of Science in Single Engineering, concentration in Traffic and Transportation. Worked for about four years in construction, consulting, DOT. And then moved down here and I've been practicing as a traffic engineer for nineteen years. We're also, our company's also the village consultant for other municipalities. In my case, I handle the village and law department. So as Michael mentioned, we were requested to review the traffic study. That was requested by the village staff. Part of that traffic study was to conduct additional counts. We counted in two separate days. That was Tuesday, April 10th, and Wednesday, April 11th. The times were expanded a little bit. If you remember, the traffic counts in the morning were six to nine. One of the things we noticed is, given the existence of the school in close proximity, we felt the counts in the afternoon should have started earlier, just to see the impact of the school in the area. So we counted from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Again, the school wasn't session. I made sure the school wasn't session, and there were a bunch of activities happening on the days of the counts, after-school hour activities. So based on the traffic counts, the peak hours in the area are from 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning, 3:00 to 4:00. You can see that that's kind of like the school peak, even though they have, you know, the missing children, you still have activity, things are happening. And then 5:00 to 6:00, which is typically what you see as the commuter peak hour, people coming back home from work. So once we collected that data, we looked at it, and we compared it with the previous data. How was we comparing? So the traffic hours were within 2% or 10% of the counts that were conducted on behalf of the airport. So a difference of 2% to 10% is within, you know, it's typical, it's normal. Why do I say this? You can count intersection every single day, and you're going to have some fluctuation. If you have a fluctuation of 50%, something went wrong. But again, you can count every day, the same intersection, you're going to get different numbers. We also reviewed the trip generation. They do a proper trip generation for this. Distribution, assignment of traffic. So we went through all of their methodology, and we, in essence, concurred with the findings on the methodology. We also looked, as Michael mentioned, at the amount of traffic that, based on their projections and their assignment, that would be seen to the north of Vanbury. Again, taking into consideration that you're going to have traffic going north, also traffic coming from the north, that basically adds about 2.8, oh, sorry, one additional trip every 2.8 or 2.2 minutes during the morning and the peak hour. What do I mean in the morning we have people, or northbound, we might have two cars that are coming southbound? For the same token, for the south, you basically will experience approximately 1.2 or 1.5 additional vehicles every minute during the morning and the afternoon or even peak hour. Based on the geometry of the roads and the traffic analysis, this additional traffic can be accommodated without changing any of the characteristics or patterns of the road. So in summary, as I say, you know, we looked at everything that they did in terms of methodology, analysis, and findings, and we are in general in agreement with the currents. We run our own analysis, and the proposed development can be accommodated by the roadways, assuming the improvements that they mentioned in the traffic study. As you know, there's a post-laden lane on Route 25. I want to mention this, the state actually reviewed their traffic study, and they concur also with their analysis, and they're in agreement providing a correct way on Route 25. Any questions? Hope more than half has answered.
Thanks Javier.
I don't know if perhaps, Chief, have you estimated if the addition of the subdivision would perhaps impact the number of deputies and staff, police officers that we have in order to maintain, you know, proper surveillance and...
No, not at this point yet. I mean, I've thought about it, but I'll have to kind of wait to see, A, if it goes in, and B, how many residents it looks like it's going to add in all. And we know how many units there are proposed, but I don't know how many, you know, residents. If you just take that and double it, or, you know, what the factor is, but I am concerned with yes.
And when we're on the line, if we're adding 300, 400 homes, 300, however, my question was going earlier, you know, it sounds like, everything sounds beautiful, and it's a great plan, but as my concern is with the growing activity in all of the United States with, you know, violence, obviously, more people in neighborhoods, our kids, our families all nice and safe, in addition to just traffic. So I would like to make sure that perhaps you can consult your chief and see if this is going to make an impact in the number of staff members that you count on, and we will be able to perhaps make sure that all of our community is in protection, safe in this. Now, alone, if they're okay? Yeah? Chief?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. It's definitely something to consider, you know, as the whole package.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Thanks Javier. Kind of moving forward, I want to reiterate, too, that the property is actually Zoned R1. This was brought up at the public hearing as well, it's kind of wrapping our brains around what that means. The R1 is the single-family residence district. North Aurora does not have an open space zoning designation, but again, it is R1, which allows single-family homes by right. What we did, we asked Hescott Associates to do an estimate of the number of single-family homes that could fit onto this property. And if you look at the diagram here, it's a sketch, taking into consideration some of the detention areas that outline the current development, and using the existing setbacks, block width, ladder minimums for the R1 district. I mean, it was estimated that it could be about 230 homes in this subdivision by right, which would include a gross density of 2.2 units per acre, and based upon U.S. Census count for persons per household at 2.86, approximately 658 residents. And again, that 2.86 from the census period takes consideration of housing types, and it's an average of the community. R1 district itself, I want to, just want to add, is listed the permitted uses and special uses included in the district. I did this to show that, again, single-family's permitted use, special use in this list included Gulf Horse, and also Pliny Development. And the Pliny Development by special use affords the anyone at that point in time to come forward and make a request to do so, and in that capacity, ask for reductions and setbacks, bulk regulations, yard regulations as well. If a use is not shown as permitted or special use, which townhome places not, it is considered prohibited use. And because it's prohibited, that's the, just for the request for going for the R1 to the R3 and R4 to accommodate the duplexes and townhomes. A little bit more about density. I know that some of the trustees had asked this question tonight, I just want to kind of highlight that. The gross density for the development itself is about 3.65 units per acre. Now, gross density takes consideration of the entirety of the property, 102 acres, and the number of units. It's pretty simple math. And that density, what we did in this area was break out the individual areas, meaning the R1A area, R3, and R4, and we were left with a net density of 7.92 units per acre. According to the developer and the submissions to the plan reports, the 50% of the development will be dedicated to open space, stormwater potential right away, right away meaning sidewalks and streets. The village doesn't have a specific density required. Instead, we rely on our bogging yard regulations, our setbacks, our ladder minimums, a lot of other requirements, to kind of arrive on a actual density for development itself. Looking at typical densities in the lower right-hand corner, that was extrapolated from the American Pliny Association's typical gross densities, and you can see for single-family detached between 4 to 10, single-family row homes, 820, and then 825 for 3 and 60-inch houses. So you can tell that they're well within that range as well. Also, too, we pulled the North Aurora examples on the bottom left. That actually is not a country cul-de-sac, it should be countries of Highland Estates, which is located south of Fairway View, country called being to the east of this development. Their gross acreage is, gross density 1.9 units per acre. And looking at Randall Highlands, which is located in Randall and Orchard, which includes a mixture of commercial, it also includes single-family homes and townhomes, they arrived on a density of estimated about 3.89 units per acre. The zoning and subdivision departure, which is included in the PUD amendment, is equivalent to that. Sort of, it lists the requests made by the petitioner. Each of these counts is broken out into separate zoning districts, you have R1A, single-family, the R3, general residence district, accommodate the duplexes, and the R4, accommodate the townhomes. The actual standard or what the code requires for each district is in the center column to the left of it, or is proposed, and to the right of the departure. Again, the R1A, R3, and R4 are currently all existing zoning districts that are the North Aurora zoning ordinance. There are also some that are in subdivision ordinance, cul-de-sac length links, some requirements for street light distances, and maybe which they've been, we'll kind of go through that as we proceed here. Now, as I mentioned earlier, there were eight conditions that came from the Plan Commission as conditions of approval. Now, stat had one, which was the alignment of the OPRS intersection, which we're currently working on right now with the engineering plans. I'm going to just kind of go through this really quick. The first one being the additional traffic study, that was actually completed by Kailway, and Javier, they just went through the information. The second condition was additional evergreen trees in the buffer area. As Adam explained in the landscape plan, that there were additions of evergreen trees to each of the buffer areas. Number three was a tree preservation plan. The subdivision ordinance has a tree preservation plan, but we wanted to kind of memorialize this in the PUD as well, so it was not lost at any point in time as we proceed. Codes can change, we wanted to memorialize this in the PUD itself. So basically, if any trees are removed or damaged during the demolition or the development of the property itself, there's not a fine in place, but it's to be replaced at a similar caliber. And if there's a large tree removed that cannot be accommodated for, it would have to be done kind of with a similar number of caliber trees. So if one tree is four inches in diameter and is knocked down, it would be replaced by six two-inch diameter trees. This is what the map allows. So that way, each is accounted for when it comes to a replacement. One of the Plan Commissioners recommended that the Sussex Court, which is the southernmost street, that western leg there, which goes into a cul-de-sac, being one of the subdivision departures, is longer than what the total allows. So they wanted to go 30 feet to 33 feet to allow for additional road right-of-way for emergency vehicles, which the petitioner, as Elijah has shown in the plans set tonight, included in the packet. The one condition, the one condition of approval, number five, that was not agreed upon by the petitioner, was going from the R1A setback of five feet to the R1 setback of 10 feet. Now, there's some illustrations in the packet tonight that kind of depict some of these site setbacks. 10 feet is what the R1 currently requires there, we're posting R1A, which is an existing zoning district at five feet. They have set the minimum of five feet according to discussions with petitioner that those who fluctuate would be a minimum of five, so we're expecting between five to seven feet, so you could expect between 10 and 14 feet between each single-family structure or these structures in the development. The distance, number six, is the distance to the streetlights must be provided and approved by the village engineer. Included in the packet is a, after the meeting, the petitioner went ahead and created a streetlight exhibit. There's only one portion of the streetlight exhibit that actually exceeds 250 feet, so that was the one instance, and we reviewed that and did that, looking back at the plan, that was just for lack of redundancy in the streetlights itself. And number, moving on to number seven, was that the streetlights can be deployed in technology. They agreed to that, and will move forward as a requirement that all the sites in subdivision utilize mobility technology. Lastly, was that the PUD paid impact fee of $715 per unit for the land cash fee for the fire district. Anytime a property annex is into the Village of North Aurora, they're paid an impact fee of $715 per unit to the fire district. In this case, the properties are annexed into the village, so the $715 is not required, but to assist with future capital planning and assets and the burden from the development upfront, the developer has agreed to pay the $715 per unit to the fire district.
Hey, Mike, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
The number three of that Plan Commission conditions, you're saying that the PUD, or staff's recommending that the PUD vary from what the existing ordinance is that assesses applying if the trees are approved?
Correct, and I apologize. What's in here is different with the PUD. If you look at the PUD, the language does not include fine system. The language in the PUD includes a script, it's a per-caliber remedy for any treatment that were damaged. We wanted to get away from the fine system because we wanted to make sure that any loss of tree or vegetation that property remained in the area and was displaced elsewhere in the village.
Is there any requirement that those replaced trees have to be in the same geographic location or within a certain area? Like if a big 50-year-old oak tree is damaged or destroyed or killed, does it have to be in the same area, or can it just be added to a berm on the other side of the development?
It could be dispersed the way it's currently within. It leaves a super interpretation at that point, because within the design, if you have a large oak tree, replacing with several smaller oak trees might be more difficult, but it could be dispersed throughout the development. But again, these are conditions of approval that came from the Plan Commission. As I'll note later, any condition that's from the Plan Commission can be removed, you can add additional conditions if you want, but I'll look at it at that moment.
To me, that's not really a fair trade-off, you know, taking out a 40-inch oak tree replacement with, you know, 11, 15, three-inch trees or... To me, I assume it's, I think, people on their machines and operators out there and whatnot, that just doesn't seem like there's much concern, you know what I mean? Like, you have to pay $10,000 on pro. And that's, the beauty of this property is the trees. I mean, one of the people that, and people that are on the ridge, you know, I mean, that's something I'm sure they want to save and add, so, you know, I'm not comfortable with that language, so I'd like to see something better.
I agree with that. He was up with fine, they're going to be a little more careful with that.
Yeah, if you're just going to put three trees somewhere else, I mean, like, you know, this is in the way, we'll knock it down, and we'll put some trees on the north end, so something, something a little different than that.
Okay, yeah, it does move forward if it's brief timing, certainly, that is part of the PUD.
I think when we get to that point, that's what's important to remember, is that just because something's in front of you doesn't mean it has to be a berm the way it's in front of you. You have to change it, alter it, add or remove, so those are good things for the report to discuss tonight.
Now, the PUD, which is included in the packet tonight, I just want to provide a summation. This would be the actual document that would come before or should be decided before with the development, it's brutal. The, it's the last document, aside from the development plans, and it's the map amendment and special use for the PUD ordinance. This is the document that has been in discussion back and forth between the petitioner and staff, which will arrive at a place where comfortable, we would seek out for authority additions or subtractions from the PUD. But again, the actual PUD outlines the zoning request, which is, like I said, going from the R1 to the R1A, R3, R4, it would include the actual zoning ordinance and subdivision departures. There was a portion... There was a portion of the, of the PUD that I want to bring up for discussion in section five, which is the substitution policy, which allowed the developer to substitute duplexes for single-family homes and townhome duplexes within those areas. Again, there would be no increase in actual density, but you would have the ability to substitute in certain areas. If there were in the R3 area, they could put single-family homes in there. And in the R4 area, which, which are coming to towns, they could do duplexes in there as well for the conditions outlined in the PUD itself. So I wanted to bring that up for discussion. Again, we were very glad there was no increase in density, whatever number we agree upon or arrive on for discussion. But I did want to bring that up as a point, if anyone would like to discuss that.
Mike, uh, Mike, I'd like to, I was looking through this earlier and I couldn't find a net density figure for our general Village, for the general area of Village itself. Do you have that figure?
We don't, we don't have one. We don't have the density requirements.
A net density? You have the gross density though, I saw.
No, we don't, we don't have any density requirements in Village.
No, not requirements, just what the figures are, every system figures.
Yeah, I'd actually have to research that for some state. I don't have that right now. Before Mike wraps up this presentation...
You gave some, you gave some...
Yeah, I did for the development. It was 7.92 for the development for net density. I think it was 3.9 for the gross density. And I think you do a couple of examples.
You compared that to some other areas in the Village?
Correct, to Randall Highlands and also to country of Highland Estates.
But only, but using gross density figures, I didn't see a net density figure, which include all the other...
Yeah, that's something I can look into. If you want me to look into it next meeting, or we can just research it.
I'm curious about it, yeah, thank you.
Before we wrap up the presentation on the last slide, or Mike, if you have any things we're, we're still going for discussion tonight and what their comments are. I just want to go back real quick to the planning commission conditions. Plan number eight was requested, that is the fire impact fee. I want to go a little bit deeper into that. So typically, when we have an annexation agreement, we negotiate fees that are already scheduled, and sometimes we can deviate from that. Because this has already been annexed into North Aurora, we're subject basically to the fee system that's already in our ordinances. The fire fee is an annexation legally. So by ordinance, we can collect a name of the land for the school districts and an impact fee for the land for park districts. In this case, I believe it'll be the block five park district. The fire district, they may have requested the planning commissioner to offset impact fees. At the time, I don't think it was made clear to the planning commissioner just from your board's aware. That impact fee is not a general impact fee. It was not built in their basic operations or their functions. It can only be used for the land for a future purchase or building of a fire station or some town that lies, because that follows state statutes, once again, because it's not an annexation. So, and Kevin did correct it.
Right. I mean, with the annexation agreements, we can negotiate a more, a fee that can be used for other things, other things other than the acquisition of land. But because the property's already annexed, we're limited to what the statute allows, which is land.
Is that the conclusion of your presentation?
No, I just, a little bit more.
Oh, good.
A bit more items. I wish for that.
Hold on, Mike, one more question on this slide. The substitution provisions, what is the, what would be the purpose of that? Though that provision?
Well, you know, Mark might be a bit better to answer that question. But I believe if, if going through the phasing of the process, if they find that a certain product is, is more marketable or it actually has more demand in the marketplace at that time. Because this is going to be done in phases, it's been a couple of years since we've all been selling. So it would be basically based on a minimum of market demand. Mark, I don't know if you have anything to sort of add to that?
Yeah, just agree. I think one of the key learning things that builders have learned through the downturn, as we've kind of come into this recovery, is, you know, we don't always, you know, we can't create the market. The market is what the market is, and we can serve the market. And so what we have found in PUDs and applications similar to this is that as the project progresses, you maybe adhere to it and you realize that the demand is really more single-family and that maybe a duplex demand or a townhome product, the shift or the market shift is to something different. And so what we've just found is it allows some flexibility from us as a builder without increasing density, without going in for subdivision variances or changes, but to adapt to a changing market, to be able to provide a product that would effectively downzone in a different way. And so what we have tried to work or discuss with staff is how to protect the integrity of a subdivision. And so some of the restrictions within the PUD ordinance language that we have discussed is making sure that there's continuity. So I couldn't just go into street B and throw in five single families and then have duplexes all around it. There would be basically an accountability system to make sure that in the event the market shift did say that more single-family units, you know, serve the market better, I would have to do it or again, if there's agreement within that language, an organized, structured event where I would have continuity to that existing use before that would be approved.
So would it be a cap or percent that I could, so we don't have? Well, again, you couldn't, we couldn't exceed, well, if they're proposing 7304 rooms right now, you could not exceed that. What that means is that you cannot put a duplex or a townhome in the single-family zoning area. You could not put a townhome in the R3 or the R1A area. So it would only be a downgrade, a downgrade in density, so to speak, to exceed that overall unit threshold, if you will. Or like you mentioned, it would change the look of the area. Well, I think with the R1, we did clustering of six single-family homes, so it would not be deemed as being a spot zone. We're putting, you're not going to put a single-family home in between a duplex unit or a townhome grouping. It would have to be a minimum of, I think we did six unit clusters for the single-family units. So again, any change in plan that comes about, if it's within the zoning parameter within this approval, wouldn't be subject to task review anyways. Anything outside of this, if they wanted to do a duplex in the R1A area or, you know, if there was any deviation from the current zoning where they're proposing it and the way they're proposing the units to be laid out in there, would be considered to be a major change in plan, which would require full public hearing to come back before the planning commission to the Village Board to do this over again, to reexamine the plan.
Right, I mean, we wouldn't want to see more blocks of duplexes or whatever, given that they're sold.
Correct. And that's why we, that's why STAT suggested requiring at some point that they were actually put the zoning layouts. Because by right, they could have requested a PUD and just called the whole entire PUD and R1 zoning, but then allowed more or less by definition or by provision that allows certain types of uses in there. But in this case, we actually divided the development up into different zoning districts. That way, those units were subject to those specific areas. They weren't allowed to go outside of that. Some of the other information included in there, there's a signed package included as an exhibit in the PUD. The PUD agreement is very, very specific to the development. This gets into a lot of minutia of what happens afterwards when this were to be approved. We talked about project phasing, financial requirements, ensuring for many improvements that would need financial backing. The building codes, they're looking to lock in current building codes as they exist. Maybe subject to any state code amendments, building codes, CDRD codes. But as far as building codes go, they are looking to actually lock in right now for a six-year period for 2009 International Code Series. Also too, they've asked that the permitting process be allowed to be submitted on master set. These are all new details and which STAT is concurrent with based on our internal processes. A lot of what is, what is included in the PUD was requested to be extrapolated from the bylaws. And these were brought up at discussion. We talked about density and those sorts of things at the planning commission level. The PUD, or actually the underlying HOA bylaws, they don't allow, with the exception of rear decks, patios for building additions. It doesn't allow for accessory buildings, structures on residential lots. Can't have sheds, basketball goals, play equipment, things like that. So again, very restricted through design what they can and cannot do on that property. It also includes controls, so that's a consensus that can be up on the property themselves. And includes also anti-manatee requirements, which typically the builder themselves would have on their development and to just eliminate some redundancy in the model of units and designs. You don't have two next to each other, they'll hear requirements as well. So again, the PUD is very, very specific to what the request is, what the ordinance will look like afterwards. And that would be the document that would come back before the Village Board for approval issued before. Now, this is just for future considerations. This is the last slide. What we're looking to do is sort of wrap up with some of the parts here. And again, the, they're requesting a map amendment. They're requesting a specialty use of the PUD. We have conditions of approval that were from the planning commission, which are subject to change tonight based on the discussion. And also too, there are, there are ways of looking at this in entirety. There could be any comments that should both board with the seat. With any of the setbacks, the zoning districts, the Village Board has the ability to make a comment to any of this. You can accept everything that's been done as is. You can reject or accept various proportions of the plan, PUD, the zoning. You also have the right to add additional provisions, should you choose. So again, this is, this is a book for discussion. There's open opportunity here to kind of go through what we provided. Ask any questions, we'll provide any comments. Thank you.
I have a question for Park. Do you, in these type of targeted developments, do you see generally an increase in the need for like emergency services, fire, police, or, you know, medical emergencies or anything like that in these types of communities? As opposed to just a regular, single-family residential subdivision?
I guess the, we have not done a study of that, of that type of scenario. What I will say is, as we've looked at fiscal impact studies, the permitting, the revenue that's generated through the new housing typically goes above and beyond and offsetting that increase. But specific to your question, no, we've not done a data type of research to that. But yes, through fiscal impact studies and analysis, typically those impact fees, building permit fees, collectibles of revenue typically seem to satisfy an increase in those services that the Village makes anticipate.
If you allow me, just give my opinion. You know, it's, I love the plane. I tell you that, it's beautiful. My wife is there, I'm going to talk to her later. What I notice with this situation, with this type of subdivisions is that, you know, a lot of the times, and you can correct me, chief, if I'm wrong, you'll have perhaps calls that are, you know, I found a suspicious vehicle parked to you, can you come and check it? Or perhaps, you know, I had a, somebody walking his dog and he urinated in my yard. And you know, it's like you're not getting a lot of calls that are perhaps dangerous or, you know, risky calls. But you do get your share of calls that are perhaps, you know, still need to be dispatched and investigated. And that's exactly what I wanted, you know, to take into consideration. Because, you know, again, we're adding a subdivision. We added the other subdivision in Orchard Road, you know, the condominiums and whatever. And as our population grows, well, our need and for other services, perhaps like fire departments and law enforcement, it's going to be impacted when we wear another. With, well, risky calls or not risky calls, we still need to serve our people, right? So if we can go through and make a study or try to figure out an average, you know, because we don't want to shorten our police department or our fire department in any way, because they're the ones that keep our families safe.
You know, obviously, we're getting the additional taxes with this. So what goes along with that is our evaluation of what the requirements are. So I think that certainly is part of our future. But it's, it's particular right now, as I say, certainly impossible. And again, it's going to be spaced, obviously, all of, no, they're not all going to be built the first year and then all of them can be moved into the first year. Fully charged. Do you have more presentation?
I don't, but a little bit of kind of trouble is that even though we're, you know, just going through the development process, there's been a lot of lunar engineering that's been done. The village engineer has sat down with the fire chiefs and gone through return temples and related various pretty different fire apparatus. They're really complying with that as well. So there was, there's not been a discussion on studies about the impacts financially on the district. They have had the ability to comment on the plan themselves, looking, making sure their apparatus has had moved into effectively, you know, servicing the property.
It's safe to say there will be more police calls, more ambulance calls, and hopefully, no fires.
Oh, and what we may be able to do is compare with other subdivisions. You know, I'm sure you, I'm sorry, chief, or have the chief can provide records of how many calls come through, you know, let's say Tanner Street or some of the other subdivisions that have a similar number to the residents that the subdivision will have. I mean, none of our subdivisions are violent, in my opinion, you know, so. But we want to go through and make sure that all of our residents are served properly by all of our services, right? So, and get a good idea.
Do you feel that increase in, in police calls or whatever would negate us of food in this?
Oh, absolutely not, okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's, yeah. Like I said, I love, I love the idea. I really like the plan.
I think the way we talked about this, we got presentations, and we're going to open up for those from the audience who wanted to speak, and then we would go through our discussion after that. So if there are two people that sign up to speak, maybe more of them would like to. Obviously, we don't want to repeat the same thing that each individual. Hopefully, the answers to all the questions that have been submitted or presented before in our previous, the whole meeting, in our previous meeting of our planning group, that all those questions have been answered. But for those who want to speak, Mike Kimble? Please state your name and your address, or speak as the night view.
Good evening, my name is Mike Kimble. I live at 584 Hammer Lake, North Aurora. I moved in in 2003. One of the things that I'm concerned about is some of the side lot setbacks. I believe they are recommended by the planning commission, and I think that's still kind of being discussed. I live in Banbury Ridge, single-family homes. And one of the things I really like is the openness of our subdivision. I chose North Aurora because of this, and I bypassed a lot of other subdivisions in other towns. I also have concerns about the traffic study. And I think most people are utilizing other routes through subdivision, mainly Sharon Lane and Time Creek. And I don't think these are discussed in the traffic study. So I don't apply my victims, and I don't see an answer. Another thing I'm concerned about is density and pricing. I don't see any of the GIS data in King County showing that these houses will suffer high rates. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you. Yeah, forget the age. Okay. I actually went and looked with my husband and some friends at your place in Pingree Grove. And we were pretty impressed with it. But one thing that we noticed was none of them had basements. Are basements going to be included in these houses?
Just for process clear, do you want me to address questions on the fly?
Yes, yeah, okay.
It'll be fine, just as a great... Yes, so yes, there will be a mix because of the grading and the site conditions. There will be a mix of standard basements, lookouts, walkouts, as well as some slack conditions. So there will be a mix of all foundation types.
Okay, that was a kind of a deal breaker. If there wasn't basements, we weren't going to go into it. The other thing is, you talked about there being a pool at the clubhouse. Is there like an exercise room too, or?
There is. There's actually two, two spaces within the clubhouse. One is kind of a flex room and the other is like an exercise room.
Can decks be added onto the back of the houses?
So typically, because all of the houses have a standard outdoor living area, whether it's covered or uncovered, there are restrictions as to sizes of decks or additions. A lot of that is regulated.
A lot of that is regulated by the zoning district, some of the VAR coverage, and so there won't be a lot of opportunity to add major expansions like that. So yes, the product is designed to have that space included to minimize that other use. So can they be allowed? Yes. Would it be part of a review process through, not only a major way to make sure that the deck would be allowable, yes, but it would also have to go through the standard permit process through the village of North Aurora for that type of issue?
And the trees. You're talking about taking down big trees and putting in smaller trees. You're talking about 55 and older. We wanna be around to see the trees develop, so you're not gonna put in these little spindly trees, right?
Sure. So my, obviously, the intent is to save as many trees, mature trees, as we can. I think the realization as you look at the site, and again, I know I always kind of go back to the answer of engineering, but the amount that fall as you get from the north route down to the south, it is quite a bit over 20 to 25 feet if I remember correctly. So the intent absolutely is to save as many mature pockets areas. What is driving some of that protection area is final site grading, final engineering. And so, yes, your point, our current proposal of looking or discussion with staff and kind of the recommendation we're taking at this point is to look at a replacement program to where that if I've got a 10-inch caliber tree, I'm replacing it with, you know, trees that at a minimum, you know, equate to that 10-inch caliber. So is that two, five inches, right? So again, I think as a part of that protection preservation plan as it evolves, I think some of those details, you know, come out, I think, through the final engineering and the review of that final plan. But absolutely, the intent would be to save as many clusters of mature trees as possible because that is what gives sites a meaning.
Really, yeah. And I also live in that Banbury Ridge subdivision, and I'm an original owner of that subdivision. So we've watched our trees grow 17 years. And finally, when are you breaking ground and when is your move-in timeframe?
Well, I always hate to be presumptuous in this answer, but as we work through this process, assuming that there is the want and the recommendation to continue to move forward, it would be our desire to start moving, doing earthwork, mass rating this vault, and be able to effectively have a model open for the spring market next year.
And you're looking for people to move in within?
As soon as we can sell.
Six months.
So typically, from the point of, you know, start of the foundation to the completion of the hall, depending on weather and conditions, that could be a four or five month period. We'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Thank you for your questions.
So we got a deal now?
We got one.
We got a deal now?
Well, we're gonna negotiate.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please. State your name and address.
She didn't say her name.
Well, I have her name.
Right, okay.
Forget the age.
She's seven, twenty-three. I wanna go back to the trees. Is the developer intending, are these going to be tree-lined streets? No, they aren't, are they?
Are you asking, are there standard parkway trees that will be planted? Absolutely.
Oh, there are?
Yes.
Okay, and so there's a regular, how wide is the parkway? I mean, some of the neighborhoods around you, the sidewalks are right at the street, so.
Sure. Sir, do you know the actual dimensions of the parkway? I'm gonna, I'm gonna relay my second.
From memory, it's a 60-foot right away with a 27 back-to-back and a five-foot sidewalk. So probably, I think it's 11 feet.
11 feet.
Something like that.
And the gentleman that spoke between when you spoke, he used, he, when we had up the picture of the plan, and he was rightly very proud of the spaces around the triplexes. But he used the phrase long monotonous facades, and if you ask me, that's what those duplexes are, is long monotonous facades. Why would, why would you do, you know, why wouldn't, why, maybe, can you break up the monotony in the duplexes also? Does anybody agree with me?
Well, you saw the presentation of what they look like.
Well, I know, but the town, but the duplexes are long monotonous facades.
No, they have road lines that change, and I think.
Well, but that's not, I mean, we're talking about house, 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 not broken up by any pieces of land that can clean, like the triplexes are. Am I, am I correct about that?
I would say no, but Mike, is it possible to pull up our initial, our initial?
Yeah, we wanna do that for him now.
I'm just making a comment myself. I'm just making a comment. I'm not demanding otherwise, but I'm making a comment on this.
Well, Mike, I think now that when they put something together, you know, there's a lot of things in consideration when it comes down to the planning, the financial expenses on, perhaps, you know, dedicating every building to be completely different.
I'm not even gonna say different. They did a nice job in putting empty space between the triplexes. It wasn't on the original. Three, three houses together. No, yeah, that's what they call them.
Did you like that? I guess that's right.
I'm glad. Nothing in between, but, no, these are the duplexes.
Some words, some of your, to directly answer. Part of the priority.
You want the picture?
A lot of those flat ones.
So what we did was we tried to heal most blocks to four before the outcome. And so, for example, increase side yard four, increase side yard four. To your point, as you get into this road, where you do see a little bit more.
And this one, this one.
Again, and I think the focus road from our planning perspective was the rear yard corridors. And being able to provide, right, significantly back-to-back upper space, green space, side yard and rear setbacks. So yeah, I think the intent was to try to provide some diversity, but you're correct, there are some street lanes where we could.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Other other, Jim?
Hello, please. Name, name is James Lawton, 604 Winfield Drive. Some of the issues I had written down have been addressed, so I'm gonna just go over a few of them that I have written down. Density is definitely not like the surrounding neighborhoods from Fairway View, Banbury Ridge, Pine Creek, Fox Valley Country Club, Tammer Turk on that, the one in Batavia, the Shag Ark Development, those are all 1.9 percent, 1.9 or lower for the density. This one again is almost double or more than that. I believe that the community needs more starter homes, not homes in the $400,000 range. These homes will be more, I guess, more expensive than some of the surrounding communities as the pricing has been shown. I know some of the issues, the drainage has been addressed. They had mentioned the planning commission that there were three culverts that were gonna take care of the water. Two of those are on the north side of the property, and only one is on the south side, and that's where Route 25 floods over Route 25, so that could be an issue. Also, Fox Valley Park just has, having a big issue with natural springs after they did renovation to Lipole Park. So they have ongoing issues of now they have under natural springs in about 10 different locations that they have to address. They keep crossing over the pathways. They have to continue to keep closing the pathways so people cannot use them. There's a pond on hole number 12 and 13, which is right about here. They removed that. That was put there because all this area to flood when it rains on that property, they specifically put that pond in there. Now that pond is gonna be filled, so that could cause major issues. Especially too, all the water from here, 240 acres, all comes through right here. And so it's gonna come through here. And I noticed too, most of the open space is water retention. It's not gonna be very usable for the residents. It's gonna be water retention. So that could cause an issue for any of these homes that are on slabs. They will flood. And I noticed, I watched many of those board meetings on TV, and on one, I think last week or week before, there is already some issues of, I think, by the property of Marmion and Winfield Drive, other that some properties there are flooding due to some issues. So I wanna know if there are issues with this property, let's say three, four, five years from now, who pays for those, you know, redeveloping of those properties or those issues? Have you figured out your warranties? I asked about warranties for what the homes will have. You weren't able to answer that at the last meeting. Open space seems to be mostly retention, Route 25 buffer is most of it. And I would like to see if you could show a picture from Route 25, how the property looks. Is it gonna be retention in that up, in that property? There's really been no issues of how it's gonna look when you drive down Route 25. You're gonna look right at a wall of water, a wall of grass, or how is that going to Across from Runaway, this was many years ago, they proposed a development in townhomes there, and it used to be an old nursery, so a lot of mature, beautiful trees. They said they were gonna save as many as they could. They saved five, and half of those have already died. On Route 25, many times I've almost been hit head-on by somebody passing on that road. Somebody's heading south on Route 25, and somebody passes that, and somebody's turning right out north, there will be head-on collisions there. Fire Department Rep. Mark Bosdeck, a part of the planning commission, said the density of this R1A and everything would increase the, tend to increase the activity for the fire department by 60% over normal regular R1 developments. So that will cost everybody more money in the village. I do like that Taylor had mentioned about more of maybe a fine sort of mark for the trees, because again, the developments that I've seen, one that was, I think it was in Batavia, they actually tore down the trees on Armor Gate and literally clear-cut everything. Nothing was saved. Nobody was there to supervise the people that were doing the tree demolition. Also, on a previous development for Fairway View, they required them to make this curved road, because originally it was a straight road. This is a drag strip. This is a drag strip. It's all too straight. They made this curve, and they made them put spaces in between like the one, made them put, and put this here, this was never there. It was gonna be solid buildings, building, 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 buildings. They made them make all these extra spaces, so they balanced out with the surrounding properties where there's more space in between the buildings. So maybe that could, there could be more done, and some of these are here, they're literally, you're five, six feet apart. It's a wall, it's like barriers.
How do I limit you? How do I limit you to your comments?
Okay, is that, I have a rest.
How much more do you have?
Just a few. I just, there's just some things that weren't addressed on some of the nine points, some of the conversations we had.
Bringing up the, the road you're talking about was the internal road in that development? It wasn't owned by the village in North Aurora?
No, no, the village made and developed it.
Yeah, but it wasn't owned by the village then, so.
No, I never said it was owned, but the village made them, made this road curve. The builder made, built or do that.
Come on.
Yeah, I don't wanna lie when you push out. I could go on for.
Well, because you're saying the same thing that you said before.
But if it weren't addressed by the developer.
All right.
If I'm asking again, they were not, the developer did about an eight-minute presentation. There was a four-hour meeting, there were a lot of questions. I know you already covered a lot of the nine points, but there were a lot of other ones that weren't addressed. And again, I have some knowledge in this industry. I've been doing this for over 30 years. My family's built over 7,000 homes in the Fox Valley area, over 1,000 in North Aurora. So I have a state representation of what could be done for the community. All the developments, again, are not 374, there's about 70 billable acres on that property with all these bits, and the setbacks and all that, and the open space. Our neighborhood has 72 acres and there's only 190 residents. So it just shows you that the high, high density issue that we'll, we'll have with the property. I think that might be it. Oh, and also, the developer mentioned age targeted the last meeting, and he kind of switched it in the presentation of active community, which maybe, you know, they've done a little more research, but basically, that is the new business plan for developers to fit more residences on pieces of property. That's all it is. Thank you for your time.
Hang on. Sir, mayor? You know, I, I'm just a public servant, right? I'm here, all of us here are here to serve you, and we have a great team, but just a little, I would like to see, perhaps, you would like to set up a meeting with some of the people that have an interest. I would like to set an individual meeting with you, and perhaps we can go through and work the area, go through some of the planning.
Because one of the main things was the density, and that they didn't do anything with the density.
Correct. I just say, I would.
I would like to hear all of your conclusions.
Alan, I think you're out of order.
Am I?
Yes. I think it's good, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for your time.
I'd like to share a word, just to. I had the same concerns the gentleman had, he has so much concern, but it's a swish to certainly agree by the fact that the style and the whole atmosphere of the total project kind of lends itself to allow for a more dense population, I believe. The individuals buy that, are gonna wanna mow their lawns, and you know, so I think that it might fit, I'm not, where's the film? I think that the, I live very close to the, to the project myself.
Right, I live in my neighborhood, yes.
Yes, and I was concerned with that, the same issue, but I really believe that the style and design and the whole purpose of the total project does lend itself to a little bit more of a density than what we normally enjoy here in North Aurora.
Right.
But it's not an R1. It's certainly not, not like our 40,000 square foot pots. It's a, it's a different environment. So you have to look at it, you can't compare it to a single-family residence that are built on a quarter acre lot or attic or lot. It's, we're talking about a different, different thing. So let's look at it for what it is, and not what we all would maybe think we'd like to see there, but it's not gonna happen.
Yeah. Well, I'm on the same page as you.
I just have one, one last thing. My parents do live in a similar community, and you have proposed one pool. That will not work for the residents. They have actually a satellite pool and a separate pool, so when grandkids come, the residents are not disturbed by splashing kids, so they actually have separate pools, one for residents and one for residents with grandkids and company that comes. So that might be an issue you might wanna address, because that will deter people from buying if there's only one pool.
All right, thank you. I was wondering, you talk about trees, and I've been in my house over 50 years with trees that I planted then, and they're now 70 foot tall and dying, so they happen, you know, it goes with the time. And so we look for that same thing to happen no matter where you want to get.
I'm a Jericho leader on Ridge Road, and I agree, just agree with the guy, but it's too much density, and with what you're saying, that it lends itself to that, it looks like that, and. And because there's townhomes and duplexes involved, it can't look better. But on Ridge Road, we look a lot better. And people come down Ridge Road, and they know what they all say? This is great. It's a really nice townhome. They're well-cared-for. There's space in between. You've got the curved road. You don't have people flying through there on these runways. So I just really would hope that, you know, the members here look at this density, again, a little closer. We know they're not all single-family, you know, that it's not all single-family home. But it can be done better than this, I believe. One question, back to the trees, because we're all concerned about that. I know that all the trees have been counted and marked out on the property, and you're talking about taking a certain amount of them, you know, obviously are going to come down with construction. Do you know how many trees have been marked? And with the plan as it is, how many for sure are going to be taken out? Or a percentage? 20%? 40%? 50%?
And no, I don't have a percentage to that detail. Yes, the trees have been tacked and evaluated for quality. That I believe has been, and I may jump back to Ridge on this. From that, the intent would then be that that tree count specimen type, right, would then be incorporated into the tree protection presentation.
But if you had to say, do you think you're going to say a half of them, or...
I personally can't answer that, Rich. I don't know if you've got a hundred...
I want to mention, when we prepared the landscape plan, Rich will some area of resurgence. We're still evaluating, because it's not a final plan yet. And of course, we're looking at the front raise to see what we can do. We've got several pockets throughout that we're going to be saving. It's my understanding, there's approximately 800 or so trees that we've looked at. Majority of them are species that are very undesirable. So a lot of those trees that are of desirability are not, you know, are not really, we don't want to save them. But we're going to be planting approximately 1,200, 1,300 trees. So we're going to be planting a lot of trees as part of the new development. So there's going to be combination preservation where we can. We're going to look at quality trees, inland areas, and try and save those, and we're going to replace a lot of trees along the way.
Yeah, we have a tree inventory, and there's back of 2,500 trees, and there are assessments as to their condition, whether they're good, bad, or different, and whether they should be saved or tried out.
Are you saying from the 2,500, that there are about 800 there were?
Yeah, we're saving them. Well, we're saying, not saying that those 2,500 are worth saving.
That's what I'm saying. What are you, you're going to take the 2,500 down to the 800?
Right. I mean, we're still looking through the final details of that. We're going to make sure, I don't want to, you know, on record say exactly what it is, but the trees that we're looking at saving are in specific pockets that we'll out for great. We also have buffer areas that are throughout the site. You've got the north buffer, the east buffer, and the south buffer. And there's trees along those buffers that we're going to save as part of the development as well. As well as along the river street buffer, we're going to try and save pockets there too. We bring them upon, I can show you, but to give you an exact number, we'll certainly lock that down as we move forward.
As far as the pockets, one last question, Mr. President of the Village, President. With these pockets, and my concern in particular is Ridge Road, because that for a man, but for all of us, as we go along that edge, and I'm going to be behind duplexes, so I've got the wall of product that's being built there. Within those trees, there is a lot of, I'm going to call them weeds and wheat trees and, you know, whatever else is growing there. But they are creating a pretty nice buffer. And I used to keep my area kind of cleared out, so I could have the fairway view of the golf course. Now I've kind of let it go. Is it the plan to, are you going to, and I know that most of those trees and bush are on your property, on, you know, one single... Are you planning to clean that all out, or are you just going to let that go?
Well, I think what you're saying is a very good assessment, but we're still looking at it. It's one thing from a horticultural standpoint to have a specimen tree. There's also tree shrub areas that might serve a purpose. We're still looking at that as part of the plan. If you look at the eastern edges property, you'll see that Vanberry, the same way you can drive it down, you're going to see that.
A lot of scrap in there.
Right. So there's a trick there, and we're going to be looking at that. It's not really a trick, it's just how you want it to look. Do you want that to be clean, and have a nice new buffer? Or do you want to try and preserve some of that, somebody might say shrub area, just a green wall.
But if you're going to, but it's, right. From Vanberry, I don't know that it would be a great look, as far as you're going to have two entries from Vanberry. But along the north and the south, maybe, because we're looking at the backs of the trees.
Right, right. So I think that's a great point. Because along Vanberry, you have that condition. We're still evaluating what the best approach is for that. Because a green wall might be the best way to go. But then there's the concern about the maintenance of those, of those ridges from a village standpoint. They own them, and the shrub planting within the ridges.
Sure, they're off, they're trimming them.
You know, and they want to keep them. So same thing is happening on the southern boundary of the townhome area. There's existing trees that are there, as well as a mix of trees, other stuff, let's call them. So I think there's a balance that we're going to have to make sure it makes sense for buffering and preservation.
Would the plan be, if the scruff comes out, would you then add the pine trees or the, to try to buffer them?
That's exactly what we have right now, is the plan on the southern boundary as well as the eastern boundary. If we're saving the shrub area, scrub area if you want to call it, then we're going to supplement those areas before it's open. We're going to buffer that with the new plantings that are going to be heavy.
Thank you very much.
Sir, before you sit down, could I get your last name and then your address on Ridge Road?
KALITIA, KALITA, 367 Ridge Road.
Thank you very much.
Your name is Swayman, 606 5x4, in Fox Valley, municipal estates adjacent to the property. And I just want to make a comment on a couple things. And I think as a neighbor, I share a lot of your concerns, Act. We've heard both the Plan Commission, you've been also here tonight. And we all hope this to be great. We want it to look great, we want the approach to be great. But the reality is, is the density is not a relevant conversation in my opinion. This is a different product. As a Realtor, and I work primarily with seniors and people downsizing, we desperately need this product. Not just in North Aurora, but in the entire community area. One of the greatest attributes of any municipality is diversity of housing. And that's something that we don't have here. So I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to being, you know, all the considerations and concerns being addressed in one way or the other. But I do think it's high stakes, and I applaud you for the adjustments you've made with respect to the staff's comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank you for your comment. I was thinking the same thing. I think when we're comparing densities of other pockets in the village, you're comparing apples to oranges. This is, we have to be careful that we're comparing apples to apples. There are other communities like this in the state of Illinois. You know, there's Del Webb communities up in Huntley and Shorewood, that those are more characteristic of the type of development that this is. There is very limited senior housing in this area, not senior targeted, 55 and over housing, however you want to call it. They don't, like the mayor said, they don't want to mow their lawns, they don't want to shovel their snow. All of those amenities are included in this development. They don't want the half acre lots. So to compare those, to make those comparisons is unfair to this development. And, you know, we'll see with the pricing and stuff. But the tax revenue to the village is huge, because they're not going to use this school and they're not going to use a lot of the services. They will use fire, police, and other, you know, maintenance-type services. But like the mayor said, that should be included in the tax base that this is going to generate. So I really, I'm very excited to see this development come, because it will add rooftops to the village. A lot of the complaints that I hear throughout the village, since I've been in the Plan Commission and then on the Village Board, is we need restaurants, we need, you know, businesses. Well, businesses only come when there's rooftops, and when there's people and there's foot traffic. This development adds that to the village and adds a vibrant base to spend money in the village, to, you know, buy cars in the village, to eat in the village. So I am excited to see this development come.
Thank you. I think it's been a very worthwhile meeting. And obviously, I think the staff and the yard board have done a great job of addressing those things that were presented in prior meetings. I think it's great that we've come together with ideas, solutions.
I just wanted to clarify a couple things. The, again, the condition of the second order person, the Plan Commission, of the template setbacks. To want to get more feedback is what I'm hoping to hear with that order, going with as proposed at five feet for the R1A district. Also too, there's a lot of discussion about tree preservation. This was one of staff's main concerns over a year ago, we first had conversations with the developer. And you can see the chronology of the actual plans up there. This is directly from the Plan Commission hearing. Again, it shows more grid pattern over the current year, and designing around the tree clusters themselves, primarily up at 25 and certain clusters on the north and the south there, primarily large park along the south. But one of the things that we can discuss too, is there's been a lot of discussion about the trees, preserving them. If you want to move, the condition could be that fines and caliber replacement could be added as a condition. I mean, just looking for a little more direction to move back to the PUD with, if we're ready for the next meeting for consideration.
You know, I think those things go along with the final design and layout of the roads and everything else. So, you know, I think it's, I don't know, far enough along for that type of thing, but that certainly can be addressed. But I want to know, some of from the board this evening, that is there anything that was not presented, or has not been presented, or that had been presented, that would make you feel that you're not in favor of this project?
I would just like to say that I, you know, we've been on this project for over a year now, and I'd like to say I'm very appreciative that you've been so easy to work with and, you know, taking our concerns and our feedback from you, working with us. I'm all for approval of the concept. I think it's a great fit for the village. And, you know, I concur with everything Mark has said about it's a great product, it's not to compete directly with other single-family homes, it's a different type of product, and it's desperately needed. And I say it honestly, I've acted in real estate for 20 years, I think it's going to be great.
Any other comments?
I agree, I agree. I've moved through different houses in North Aurora, and I started with a 900 square foot and worked my way up. And at some point, I might want to work my way down. You know, we love our community, everybody here does, you know? And I certainly appreciate your concerns. But it is desperately needed, I think. And if you want, you know, I want to see a community maybe downsized or I don't shovel my snow, work on my grass, this would be a great option. You know, someone's going to go in there. And we're all concerned with water and just everything. But I think, you know, the staff's work and the company, as Laura said, I mean, they really work with all, pretty much all the concerns. I'm sure they'll address some of these other ones tonight. So I, I think it's a, it's a nice positive thing for the village, so.
You know, I can't think of anything that's all up in the village over the last 60 years that I've been here, that didn't at some point in time come up with a problem that that we addressed and fixed. And we brought up the one on the east side on Eevee, and our connection with the Marmion. Yeah, there's a problem that we need to solve, and then we're working to solve it. So it's like everything else, when those things develop, and they don't seem to develop right overnight. You know, here we're talking about subdivision, it's been there 20, 30 years, and things are changing, so. But we address them when they come up, so. Any other comments? I'm joined with Brian O'Connor.
You did an excellent job of presenting all this stuff to us. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for expressing and bringing all your opinions. Thank you for your interest in investing in our village. I mean, we really appreciate it. And I'm learning my way here, so I apologize if I was, I didn't have any way of issuing a card. But whatever. And we all do, so. Thank you.
Very good.
Hey, anyone?
Yeah, I was just talking about, the only thing that before this moves forward, so it sounds like the board wants to move this forward for approval for the upcoming board meeting. With that being said, the Plan Commission conditions that are in front of you, I need to know, Mike needs to know if those are set the way you want. So this would be the time on a tree. If you want to leave it the way it is, leave it the way it is. If you want to change it, it should be changed now, so it's in the final order.
I think we'll change it. Yeah, fine. You know, most of the conversation is, nobody really knows it's a moving target on any of these trees, so right now, I don't even know.
Let's come up with some alternatives that we can discuss, all right?
Mike and I both agree that we can come up with a combo.
All right. And that's, you know, then we'll do that. So it's not, obviously, we're not going to vote strong.
Well, I would like to see a plan for the number of trees that are there now, and the estimate of trees that they plan on preserve, throughout the whole development, and then work from there. If those are the trees that they plan on preserving, if they knock down 20 of those, are those the ones that we're talking about fines, or are we talking about on the whole 25 countries?
They obviously have to, when they're afraid, they have trees that Mark, so they're the ones that they said they aren't going to preserve on.
Yeah, well, the packet is a tree preservation plan, and it's a bubble set plan, includes all the, as of right now, the trees that are being preserved. There are several hundred trees that are, if you look in your packet, you'll see the actual listings of the trees, the species, the condition. And again, the plan right before that is bubble plan, includes all the trees that are to be preserved. This is from the Plan Commission trying to reach, I had it up earlier, if you remember that cluster, we hear the number of trees that were tagged, right?
Yeah. 2,500 of them.
This is the current preservation plan that staff's been working with, with the developer. So there is a plan that has been in place. Again, this is just a tree preservation plan. The land statements for development are also included in your packet as well, have been thoroughly reviewed by staff and staff consultants.
Well, certainly if we move down, I have to beat the big trees, because that certainly adds value to first looking out the back window. But I guess that Ridge Road in the north end would be my concern, that, you know, here that they work around, designing some things around what's there versus, hey, we're going to cut all these down, which...
Some of those trees on Ridge Road are on our property, not their property.
There's all kinds of things to go into consideration. I do want to take just a brief minute to globe for a second, if I could. Right now, in our current design and engineering, we're spilling about a half a million dollars in retaining walls to protect trees. And so as we look at replacements and caliber sizing, and again, amenable to a structure that the village is happy with, whether that's a replacement or a percentage of fine, or how we get there. But I don't want to underestimate the, I guess I want to make sure that I am highlighting that our engineers and our landscape architects are really looking hard and fast as how to protect trees, to the extent of, like you said, about a half a million dollars in retaining walls, and then, right, maintenance, and the ability to construct those in a way where we don't have problems, to protect trees. So it is important to us, I don't want to minimize that discussion, as Mike said, it's been, you know, a discussion that's been ongoing from the very beginning. So we will continue to look for those opportunities. And if I need to agree to, you know, a combination of a replacement or a fine, however the village board is comfortable with, absolutely, we would try to accommodate the best I could.
Very good. Thank you. Oh my God, I'd like to speak to the people on Bridge. I have something I'd like to show you. Is there anything else that you talked about on the, and it wasn't Bill Turner? So move. All of you, either say aye or a no. Suppose? We're out of here.